I need my lunch to listen to this going down. George has five comments to add. I'm also saying that if I can terminate or suspend voting by considering necessary, the Council deserves a lot of your attention. Do you intend to recall the nation yourself and report it formally now? As Chair of the Meeting, it is my responsibility... Lord Mayor, just say that's been heard, please. Is that an answer?
Lord Mayor, does that contain what the purpose is that my house has taken them to see this board?
They're very nice, the answer.
Lord Mayor, yes, I may choose to pause for all of these.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have consented, as you know. As Chair of the Meeting, it is my responsibility to ensure that these activities do not disrupt proceedings. I would therefore request that common rules are observed during any recording of the meeting. By ensuring that you do not, no outside of the areas designated for recording, cause excessive noise during recording, setting off or resizing equipment during proceedings, whose intrusive lighting or lack of quality asks for people to repeat statements for the purposes of recording, provided or commentary of proceedings. Members of the public must also be aware that I am in the meeting room and using the pocket seating area, you may also refer to that. It's not uncommon. But that's just my excuse, because I'm going to watch it, I'm not asking you. Well, yes, I do have this work. Thank you. Do we have any colleagues?
Yes, Lord Mayor, the position counts as eight of us in the car.
Thank you. I would like to extend a very warm welcome to the visitors. We've got a very full gallery. Apparently, the jewelry hall is also full, but I think the market is overflowing on the webcast. So we will be addressing all those people. I personally, this is not when lawyers and the public take time to come in and alter proceedings for whatever reasons. So I thank you for taking part and taking time out. The easy engagement is very important. Thank you. So item three, disclosure of benefits. Councilor Doherty. Oh, no. I'm now about to bring the managing officer in, James Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I would like to say to our members, regarding counter taxing non domestic rates, whilst she was all there with the counter taxpayers and all non domestic rate payers, as per the view preferred by government and government, not mutually impressed by this meeting. Therefore, whether or not we are to declare the interest to counter taxpayer or non domestic rate payer, all evening.
Thank you, James. Councilor Doherty. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to call the agenda and have a thinking of several other activities. Thank you, Councilor Doherty. Councilor Alliott.
My dear Lord Mayor, I'm a council tenant. I'm a member of the United Military. And this will be the importance to the city who sent us, both as students. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Alliott. Councilor Burden.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, to the department of the city.
Thank you, Councilor Burden. Councilor Burden.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've got quite a few calls to this, the CS seven. I have some advice from the North House of Commons, I don't think we've had any at school. I also thought someone said, where is the point of this?
Thank you, Councilor Burden. Councilor Jarrell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to call another member of the City to ask the question.
Thank you. Councilor Smith.
Thank you, I'd like to call this.
Thank you, Councilor Smith. Councilor Chantel.
Thank you. If I'm using my, for my business, to pursue the process, I would also send several questions to the community, and also to the courts. And if I have a nice, I would like to follow up with the family.
Councilor Chantel, thank you. Councilor Calontaine.
Yeah, I want to, I want to know if you thought about the Council, it's not a problem.
Thank you, Councilor Calontaine. Councilor Burden.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. She has asked me to do, actually, really, I'm giving her a personal message. I'm going to give her a message.
Thank you, Councilor Calontaine. Councilor Sofa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to confirm, I have a tenant, I'm going to give him a name.
Thank you, Councilor Sofa. Councilor Alliott.
My dear Lord Mayor, I'm a gentleman, I'm a gentleman.
Thank you, Councilor Alliott. Councilor Burden. Single Coward. Thank you, Councilor Coward. Councilor Burden.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, this is a member of the House of Commons.
Thank you, Councilor Burden. Councilor Sofa.
Lord Mayor, I'm a gentleman, I'm a gentleman. I also, I'm a Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor Park. Councilor Azier.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, also, you're a gentleman.
Thank you, Councilor Azier. Councilor Chantel.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'm a gentleman.
Thank you, Councilor Chantel. Councilor Forman.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'm going to be sure that we do have a fair, we can share, I double it.
Thank you, Councilor Forman. Councilor Petrie.
My dear Lord Mayor, I'm a gentleman.
Thank you, Councilor Petrie. So we all move on to item four. This is immediate term, it's strategy in the Council of Setting, ages one to 1992. And of course, with various parties, I am happy to give my consent to the lead speaker for each political group to exceed the five million pounds speaking. Set out our procedural rules and address the Council oral determinants on this item of business. Councilor Brennan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is my telephonic person, last member of the Council of Mountford, who is the leader and my fifth, as a board of directors. And I'm sure my colleagues around the table, whilst having the Council, I will be trying to be helpful to you to draw an excitement. This is still a thing that I enter with an automatic, kind of, right now. Supervising Council is a hot burning hand organisation, delivering over seventy hundred seats for trips to lines of air, who doesn't include the city every day. We're going to buy, get some central for grants, counter tax business rates, while the lack of clarity over sustainability of the system alongside the increasing pressures of social care raises the tax burden, which we can understand more clearly. With last but not least, awareness about the pressure on local authorities on our social care, social care numbers, particularly in conjunction with funding challenge, we have an aging population, whilst being all those independents, this best approach, the stable challenge, combined with all those necessary increases to increase our year anyways, which is pay rises and inflation, is all across party, local localities is a huge concern. The recent local information we need to speak for due state's local finance survey, found that ninety seven percent of the citizens' express disappointments in the government's lack of progress is related to the same working system for local residents. And also, we have local challenges around children's social care. The decisions we make today, of course, are not people's children, or people's own local priority. So with that, I would be bothered, in particular, if you were to support. The pressure on social care, therefore, we may continue to see, although standards are a bit different, and provided to more fully, this has to be widely directed to social care. Today, we spend sixty one percent of our budget on social care for our citizens' children, and increase fifty five percent over the last ten years. And against this, we see sixty eight percent decreased in our general funding. We need, today, to reject this reflection, increasingly careful decisions we need to make to ensure we deliver the right services in the best way, with the benefit of our citizens. With majority houses in the city, always balanced, they will be, it's clear that increasing counter tax will not change our financial position significantly. However, improving the economy in the city will continue to show that housing is very far. Last year, we had more housing provisions than the average reporter, with majority of the property properties, for the first time ever, who we rejected, which we keep in order, essentially. Certainly, we continue to see business growth in the city, with the news of new exports, the increase in jobs in circle towns, possibly many of the UK cities, including second year in growth, projected to continue in international too. More jobs and businesses in circle towns, leading to business rates, again, which have to support technologies. Alongside this, we are able, through our investment programme, to invest into projects, both for, both for leaving the whole open, starting businesses, as well as to renewing the city's capital. It is clear to see legal reforms, including the four short system, how to start a company, as well as investments in the strong economy, which alone has enabled the year two thousand jobs in its first four years. Supporting role of the economy will also take form in investing in our most important assets, including all those, which require more targeted purposes, but also to our ultimate convenience, by asset management. This budget promises the investment of over twenty million pounds in the next four years. We're also looking for assets in our ambitious, ambitious asset maximisation programme, designed to be well plotted, as well as in the city, as also used to improve our tax pay. I want to reassure all those who are concerned about the future of some of our key line of buildings, the God vision of heritage to our city, which is very important today. I want to see our heritage world is launched, and believe that now is the time for that to happen. And this is all out of national address that we've brought to play in recent years. The future investment in the city in recent years, including redevelopment, such as the St Ira, and the recently developed building, the Smithfield, the Inforth Point, leave, that now is the time for those opportunities to go to commission. Over the last four years, new best in the city to last loss, so much as for our community best performance. And today, we're taking the second place of that project, having visited the Northern Bricks and Beneficience, the ramble labors of St Maure this week, and to say that it was now being owned by a Kenwood village house families, which will show lots of art and that, to turn to an advocacy center, a scene for some of the benefits of this space. All these families have made progress, actually, with supports of our natural position. Not to invest in a counter project with this natural position, as well as seeing assets defined in the important features of many of our cities, which are great places and important places in the world. As in previous years, we continue to balance the need for best support to us all over the city, with the necessity of ensuring tax pay. So this innovation and modernisation is crucial to managing business, and many of the elements in this could be explored to do that. This is in parallel with increasing counter tax, the investment in these services. The two set reset tonight, social care, also additional, more than a nine percent, hard to establish. With the opportunity for us to make these difficult decisions to make, the initial proposal was reported from January, now on, the three point nine percent counter tax increase, online for the chemical investments, in supporting all those wonderful assets. Well, the consultation, cabinet agreed last week, to remember, it's on the seventies, five service, and also proposals around the end of the year. The proposed before you, represent moments of discussion, negotiation, of what's officers and members and pressures we face, over the level tours, and those that all colleagues and number of the press who are facing today on social care. And was also mentioned, that the loss, the business rates filed for the fourth quarter year, which included the petition six million pounds this year, is particularly disappointing, despite extensive lobbying and lobbying, and especially being able to monetarily improve the overall picture of the city. If so, I believe this would be a difficult, but necessary decisions. Whilst politics, elections is all about popularity, I think it's also about responsibility and to be loving. And no one can delay the development of the city, and also very best for it. And for me, the answer in the book is part of our responsibility. There's any obstacle we look for, we'll see, and we see there's all the counters for someone to call, which is to repurpose states. There's a legal situation, where I'm equally proud and able to hold, I can't pick a day, I believe this is best, but suits just to remind, of a proud tradition, for circle tents, I'm not taking those decisions I was allowed to take. And there are many colleagues who are still believing in people today. It's a bleak choice at times, however, it isn't one we find ourselves alone in. Almost every local authority is having to make the same decisions with this counter tax, whilst also continuing to make the same ones. Some choose to pull back on these residencies, while there's only significant options for facilities, those important facilities, and stopping doing everything for such facilities. Both of these are choices that we can take, with the benefit that it is, with the potential of economic prosperity for the city, and the future sustainability of the house itself. Lord Mayor, you know, I have been too optimistic. And not so many years ago, I was considering, that was the option, to take, and to make, in this chamber. However, today, the economy in the city is improving, supporting my decision to open this centre, and the purpose for businesses, for jobs. But whilst my optimism, of outside expansion, leads me, I still believe that all to achieve is the right one. And I hope colleagues will support me in that. We refer to the actions to you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Calontaine, you are up for exercise with the chaperones.
No, I want to leave, but I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Alliott.
My love's wrong way man.
Councilor Burden.
Mine shits.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This time last year, I told this Conservative-led administration that the budget that they were putting forward for 2019, 2020 was a simple electioneering stunt, and that they were hiding the real cuts until after the council elections. They were in complete denial at the time. Yet, in just a few months after the council elections in May, we saw a further five million pounds of cuts being made by this administration, which proved my original point. For the last ten years, annual budget proposals have been announced in late November or early December, giving us plenty of time to scrutinise the proposals. However, because there was a general election in December, councillor Abigail Brown delayed the announcement of the budget proposals until after the general election, so that she can hide these cuts from the public just before the election. She even had the audacity to suggest that the delay was a government directive, and I later exposed that as being untrue. And here we are again. Now that the general election is over, you can see their brutal cuts. The cuts before you today are a direct result of the failure of the local Conservatives who have been supported by some city independents. Why do I say that this is the result of local failure? Well firstly, in February 2019, they announced that they were going to increase the general reserves from nine million to eleven million. They totally failed to do this. In fact, not only have they not increased the reserves from nine million to eleven million despite making the cuts to do so, they have depleted the reserves from nine million to six million. Why? Because the budget that they proposed back in February 2009 was inadequate to meet demand. And they actually overspent. So five million pounds of the cuts that you are before you today are to now increase the reserves from six million back to eleven million. Secondly, in 2016, the government empowered the council to raise a two percent adult social services preset. Councillor Abigail Brown, who was the finance lead at the time, failed to do this. Her failure to raise this preset is costing this city council one point seven million pounds a year, in terms of lack of adult social care funding. So far, it has cost this local authority six million pounds, and it will continue to cost this local authority one point seven million pounds on ongoing basis. Thirdly, the Conservatives were too busy decorating their offices and furnishing them with luxury sofas, that they let the city's children down. Ofsted condemned their administration for putting children at risk. And now they have been sidelined by even their own government. And other local authorities have come in to sort the mess out. And when councillor Brown says that she can sleep at night, because she's protecting vulnerable children, I would like to remind her that it was under her watch that these services were ruined in the first place. So we, so, so we have failure, failure, and failure by this Conservative administration. But that is not all. Everyone else must now pay the price for their failure. They are hitting the lowest paid staff in this council with penalties of just five thousand pounds for some high pay. These are frontline staff, such as care workers that they are tapping. This is in addition to the two hundred and fifty so staff that are facing job cuts. They are closing homes for looked after children. They are cutting drug and alcohol services, which will inevitably lead to more antisocial behaviour. They are closing neighbourhood centres, such as Bursley, Fenton, Mayor and Norton, making it difficult for residents to contact the council, and leading to a decreased footfall in our town centres. I ask you a question, particularly for city independents. What has happened to your motto, equal respect for all six towns? The shop mobility service for wheelchair users will be cut unless they can find a sponsor. The local Conservative failure also means that our residents will now have to pay more to get less. They will charge for transport for some children with special educational needs. Adult daycare service charges will go up. Community alarm and pendant costs will go up. Vulnerable people incapable of dealing with their own finances will be charged for the first time by this council. Cost of registrars and bring with care is going up. Charges for leisure services are to increase. Car parking charges are to increase. Residential car parking permit will increase from eighteen pounds to thirty five pounds. Volki waste collection fees will rise from sixteen pounds to a whopping forty pounds, leading to even more fly tipping neighbourhoods. Don't forget that previous council tax, rat tax, which was called, is still posing loads of problems. Even dog poo is not being cleared up now in our streets. And very little enforcement is being carried out by those who have irresponsible behaviour. Council enforcement to hold those people who have irresponsible behaviour to account. Council tax will go above the rate of inflation by four percent. Now, close within these cuts is also the capital programme. Let me be crystal clear, Labour will be voting against these Tory cuts. However, 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 within the capital programme, there are things we do support, such as house building, particularly council housing. We believe that not enough council houses are being built in the city, and this needs to be accelerated. We also welcome investment in the city's highways and infrastructure. Our roads are crumbling, and more needs to be done by the Conservative government and the local Tories to address this in a fair and equitable manner. We support investment in our highways, in housing, and in our heritage. So don't be misled by the Tories who might tell you otherwise. We support jobs and growth in the city, but we also want to see personal wellbeing higher on the agenda. Now, no doubt, somebody is going to get up and say, but where are Labour's alternatives? Well, let me tell you. First of all, Labour would not have neglected children's social care, saving this council millions of pounds. Labour would have raised the social care budget, which would have given the council an additional income of one point seven million pounds per year. We would not have wasted reserves, and we would have lived within our means, unlike the Conservatives' overspending spree. Labour would have raised additional capital receipts to offset some of these cuts. You have got a whole list of assets that you want to sell, including Handley Town Hall. But you've only got, but you've only, but you have only got three point five million pounds of capital receipts in your budget. You can easily protect the lowest paid workers by putting four million pounds into the reserves, saving one million pounds, and then spending the whole year looking for other services through transformation. There's an alternative you can genuinely explore, rather than hitting the lowest paid. Go back, you can go back to your government and ask for more funding, because austerity has crippled our city. And you can put up your hand to having made a mistake back in 2016 and ask for permission to rectify that mistake. That would be the honourable thing to do. But none of these alternatives would appear to you, because you have an ideological mission to destroy public services, stop recognising need, and privatise services, just like your masters in Westminster. The city has had ten years of a Conservative government, and with its austerity agenda, and five years of local Conservative failure. It is time for the whole city to rise against this Conservative onslaught. The cuts within this budget are all about managing failure and decline. Their budget lacks ambition on what the future of public services should be, and how the financial crisis facing this local authority needs to be addressed. Rest assured, Labour is listening, and we will always stand up for the people of our city. And that is why today, we will unanimously vote against these Tory cuts.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I really like this housing programme. I really do passionately believe in the House of Commons. I think it's great that our authority should have a house in the way. And the reason you have the council houses, it might all depend, as I say, on this part. But sadly, I'm not sure that's all this housing programme, because of the updates in the budget. And it's great if you build, you know, over a thousand copies of the bills. And it's great for the conversions, especially in your family, they are tourists. And it's great for the search programme, or renovation of the parents. I think the empty home scheme, we can now, the biochassis system, that they're going to have, by the district house, so the district, you know, empty home. And it's an interesting scheme, it's a lot of origin that's. I don't think you can go further, because even, yeah, there's even a kind of reason to pass it down more, because sort of, after the official, you know, two thousand and fifteen, with the number of health matters. And it's hard, like, for the story, because, you know, the modern lighting, you've got assets in it, some water, you've got increased rent, increased health tax, new home bonus, and our major other firms are increasing the social impact. So all right, here's what that... So all right, there is a lot of bad house stuff, and we would endorse such a positive and ambitious housing programme. But also, I live in those areas, so I'm not, I mean, I'm very busy, but I think that's an interesting thing about it. It's not easy. It's not easy to set up. But if I'm arguing with the council, it's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, the administration, we have to make a lot of work at the time. The local administration has a huge amount of cuts, makes it very, very difficult. So I'm not saying this is easy. But the tricky thing I don't think about, totally relevant, is that it's in the union of the council, because what's this situation, it's like this morning, it's related to the birth of, and we're sharing, and I'm, 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 therefore, we have a lot of missing access, so I'm, you need that, aren't you, context? Now, I'm, 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 to, 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 they are players, and they are such a council, we might take, we might have us, we'd have to see something, and look at it. But it's all the way, it's a bit weird. She's really packed up, she gets paid on Friday, she goes and pays a lot of the centre. Monday is on the queue, the centre. I presume she's on a large, she's getting paid. So she wants to pay the prices. Monday morning, she gets phoned, and the council say, well, I haven't paid you yet. So that just wouldn't work. Yep? So that's one, such a high rate, one, one rejection of the budget. And the ones who pay the work, these huge savage, savage reductions in, in, on social hours payments. One of those, the tiny half, he said, oh, just, um, what does it all do? Change our social, this is, this is. Do you know, I owe those three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty pounds each. That, that is wonderful. Can we make a decision? Yeah. Do you have a number four? I don't know, I don't know. I don't often look at the views in terms of black and white. I often go to the grey areas, but to me, that's black and white. It's just not, isn't right. It's getting at vulnerable people and this. It is going to be that, you know, in terms of, you need to spread more fairly possible. So I'll ask for you, sitting over here, my favourite city, just three hundred and forty pounds, that and another, and one.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's been a difficult day, and lots of people upstairs, it's absolutely full of ourselves. Everybody watching, it's hard to see who serves the world from the chamber. Even love or hate on speeches, this is all I have, a platform to sound the public's voice, opinion, this event. We feel it's powerful that you can sway them into the chamber, let alone the wingman. So all I want to do is take the facts, to kind of expose and never forget them. We want to cross election, make them social hours, and we can work on the front line staff, who are physically competent with their service that belongs to our job group. How is that a good move? I think it's a very bad move, considering jumping social care, and living in our homes is more than possible to announce. This is directly sourced from your census costs, the services are already on destruction. Our social classes have been holding on for good work for so long, and if you continue to take away less for funding for services from some of our most vulnerable people in our communities, we will only find disaster. County staff have no choice but to unite with their workplace communities as they simply will not accept it. While the civil party want to stick around and watch the ship sink, the whole of peering fire day, the hot oars, and the shadows of the administration, it was not in the census. These teams were late nights, and we had to come late in the evening, helping leaders and families that strive to provide effective support. It is known that most families that speak of crisis in the evening, or dependents, are told that they're out of school. Equally, staff expect to see children in the evening, so it was not to impact on their education, and also to overlook attention to the fact that our social labour, as it is said, is a mislead. I thought that the Conservative Party announced that austerity was over, was not two years ago, with deep scenes. It seems that here, in this chamber, I ordinarily missed the moment. It's obviously not over, this country, the base of the party continues of the experience. There's almost a ground to have this project according to the code, in order to solve the city council by the problems that surround it, the county, or even sector government to take over. Just because we strive for service workers to do, such a big display, there is no hiding the truth. Our civic society is destroyed by the arbitrary decisions and the emphatic right of professional scrutiny and the level of inferiority of violence. We've even gone as far as stopping offices from taking the fact of it to the minutes, and we're doing the sweetest of things. We took away essential need to know who said what by telephone offices, and we haven't had time to give those initials and extra notes. The press always has time, these are vital crucial details. People need to know that it's exactly what is said, and how it is said, right through the end. Thankfully, I picked up on this in practice straight away. This isn't happening anymore, and I made sure of that by having that money too. When we did two years ago, we were all over so content, it's important twenty twenty-one, but now you have to add sixty thousand pounds of funding to the voter, really, for the South of the East. Everything for the voting creators, what is holding up the city is now gone or put on the watch. We're creating no shame, no scruples, no memory, allowing you to, just because we want to help, socially, we pretend that we're happy. We need to embrace and nurture our arts of beauty, not shook out on the ill-tempered occasions. Our residents deserve better, and they deserve the best of the crowd, not just on the spotlight thousand. I could stand here all afternoon, and in the evening, when I could wait with my local colleagues, so they can be trapped on verse on the rest of their, not involved by the citizens, if they farm, and a few more points, nine point two million pounds a course, park up three banks, coffers, funding, electric buses in our communities, these are things that happen right now in my world, and sure they happen in your world too. People need to even start and breathe, because that is a decision people are making, and I have no other decision. Fathers have been known for living past, for people living in past. I wonder what it is. They went to Shoolah. How many of you?
Do you press the button?
A hundred and seventeen thousand pounds on a footpath around the Pop Gold Golf Course in Old Hill. Wow. He is a big one. And now, we can see the actual action for the first time in our civic history, all because of this coalition campaign. Now, say, as if my friends across the chamber...
Quite a holder up there, it's had plenty of time now.
Excuse me.
All my friends, who are in charge of this meeting, Cathy Dallow, and thank you for the reminder, I'm quite able to put up the time now. I can't, I can't, I'd be more than generous now, please take your seats.
Thank you, everybody.
Look, we need a sore throat, if you know. Councillor Dallow.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Not a very beneficial thing, and, you know, look, was offered for me a discussion that would pass in the House. Those who tend to the man, who bear issues of our station, and the way we look after the other, I would take it. For counties, which is a state, and the city, the time to check for me, this has affected my championship, the county, the city, the county. For fourteen nations, seven nations, people, consultant, research, coffee, which change in corporate spending power, the country, the state, and the country, two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-one, which was increased by fifty to five percent of the third. While the average development was an average increase of just one proportion. The planning of our country, the political, we have a governance that cuts and cuts it, it happens about, it would be an active top cutting of them, and beat and handle that, with the, with the coast. All of it, for all the councils, of all the, it's promises, I think, by twenty...
That is fine. Can I just ask, is the challenge just being that that's a bit of a problem?
Twenty-three, eighty? Thank you. Now, look at the statistics, all the councils have got to cut it, it's the opposite of strategy, other factors, so, I think, I think, that's the last year in search, it seems another phase of growth. Treats of the English, I'm trying to, it's very difficult, this report is echoed by Roger Johnson. And I, for our sins, spent to be in my social community, and both resources were first funded enough with that information. I want to see you, but I also want you to never pay for that free course. Roger Johnson, the national improvement, you said, and approach, you are the best in transport, and the lord of power, head for the, to turn, to, to, to source. And Roger Johnson's speech, perhaps, had a damn effect on the actual reset, and approach, we are going to shoot right from the middle. The value of that is the promise, you can, you should accept, and approach, this is a misintention for each, if tempted, every quarter, whether it's up in your mind, by visiting the project, or taking the, the opportunity, and of quality of accommodation. But, versus, I mean, they should have continued, so. I stayed by the church for this, where we make seventy-five pounds in hand, and make significant losses. Your actual, your actual, your natural fee could be much easier for us. But if it's passed, then we are, we're seventy, this year, about forty million pounds, and according to the government's plan, you have your family that's very keen on it. So, yes, I'm just, I have to, 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 to,
I will be losing three thousand three hundred a year." And there's many more, Lord Mayor, and I'm just going to... From Canseys, "I am also against this budget, and we are not going to let this proposal put forward." Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks. Councillor Irving?
Thank you, um, Lord Mayor. Can I just begin by offering a correction to councillor Perez. He refers to previous budgets, the Conservative budgets. They were not... Previous budgets in this city since two thousand and fifteen were actually city independent budgets supported by the Conservatives. And this is the first Conservative budget that I have convinced, traditionally will be supported by the city independents. Because we have supported four years of independent projects without cost. Nobody's claimed it, we delivered it. But what I do want to say to councillor Perez, and I know that he has to play to the public gallery today, um, there is without shadow of doubt, he might be known as Mystic Moon, because he seemed to indicate that he knew, prior to last year's election, that there would be need for more funding to come forward. And let he got access to the reports for us, how would he have known? You, you, you quite clearly said that councillor Brown had not told the truth prior to the election, and you knew that there got to be substantial funding increases. The reason for the substantial funding increases were because of the offset report on linked-up to children. So we know where the money has to go. And as people have said on all sides, yes, it's difficult decisions, of course it's difficult decisions. But I still do not see, and no doubt councillor Perez will recall, there's a number of years ago, terms and conditions came before the cabinet, and councillor Perez would be... And when I was deputy, we looked at it, we knew full well that the terms and conditions are unsustainable in a modern economy. I could hear all the stories from councillor Pittonobus, that some people would be losing three thousand pounds, a couple might be losing six. But why is the system allowed to continue that makes people rely on that type of overtime payments?
Don't get charged!
They are, but there should be a proper structure...
Can I just hold you there, councillor Irving? I realise that it's a very emotive meeting, but please try and keep order. This is your first warning. There will be a second warning, but the third warning will be that you will be asked to leave, and I don't want to have to do that. Please comply. This is a democratic decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. All I wish to say at the end of this is that difficult decisions have to be made, budgets have to be balanced. I have been a member of this authority for an excess of forty years. I've sat through budgets, right from the days of ordnance around the bend and all this. Every budget is difficult. Every budget has to have decisions made, which a lot of people wouldn't wish to do. But I have yet to hear any components that have come forward from any side of the chamber that would propose an alternative form. Now, I understand the circumstances of people who will lose monies and resources coming out of the changes. But there needs to be a reassessment of the way that we remunerate employees. We cannot go down the route of supporting the type of payments that are being made now. It is unsustainable, and no other industry or business does it in twenty twenty, and we shouldn't either. But can I say, Lord Mayor, I just make one final plea to our colleagues on this side of the chamber. We did our bit for you when it was your budgets. I sincerely hope, I sincerely hope we shall get the same response from your side today. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Irving. Excuse me. Councillor Adams, please.
I should one day, I'm a new councillor, and like all the other newly elected members, I expect to be the first to break this time. As an independent, I say with my group, and I've been to make up my own mind with the relative site experience I have gained in last nine months, because we've got a difficult task. I have shed roots, frightened tears, and made up my mind. I have sought opinions and listened carefully to those much more experienced and wider across the board, and I thank you for that advice. I have researched also the consequences of not setting the budget today. I have discussed at length my grave concerns of the implications of high-level social charts that will have that long flight tipping, and the environment in general. And I've made some suggestions to the director, sorry, and the cabinet members as well for this, and I consider this one to be very, very closely. But I am, as everyone in this room is, very concerned about the budget lines and our staff terms and conditions. I've spoken to staff, and forwarded their suggestions, and one of the suggestions is my own, that no broad paper for staff would be so much fairer than hitting our well-paid staff as it affects our the, our the noticeable and anyone's pockets. I read carefully the email distributed by the City Director on the digital staff stating that it's a open negotiation, even beyond today, and face-to-face reassurance that we consider all other options put forward. And I am putting my trust in that fact, and, and hope that the effects of this paper was appreciated seriously by other options. It is with an extremely heavy heart, and it's supporting this budget proposal, but I believe that that is a responsible thing to do. As I have to wait for this, it's entitled to. But I do wish it to be noted, absolutely, that although I support the majority of the budget lines, I do not support the line regarding staff terms and conditions. And I sincerely hope from within my heart that another option for the negotiator to be staff effective. I am not happy to accept such services. I accept it in the sense that I'm asking on this occasion, but I will be absolutely putting pressure on the leader and the cabinet members to make sure they're aware of not wasting our precious resources on a being as effective a duty as possible, possible, can, across the board, and before us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We sit here as elected members, and we're elected, first and foremost, to safeguard the public finances. We say what we've spent the public money on in our league, what's in our election electorate, the public vote accordingly, and we sit in this chamber based on that mandate. That is actually our main function. All the rest of the things we like to say we do, that we deliver, we deliver far faster, we deliver things in our law, no, the council delivers it, because we allocate the money to do that as elected members. So today is by far the most important decision we take all year. Or not. And it's difficult, and it's difficult, because for two-one with this authority, whoever has been in political control has shared fundamental decisions. The fact that councillor Perez mentions the increase in the charge of tips, well, that's because, actually, like every other organisation in the world that puts prices up every year with inflation, we didn't do that. We sat on our hands, whoever was in political control, we played to the gallery, we played to our elected. We didn't take the nice, and I didn't find you mess... Because of that. And again, I'm not mansifying Blenner, because I think whoever's been in control of this house has thought the same thing. It's not right, and we've done it for too long. And somebody mentioned children's social care, you know my views on that, and that's exactly the same. Elected members, two-one, whoever they were, whoever was a part of it, have made the arrangements. You play the gallery all you want, you can take all you want. I saw elected members sitting in the gallery actually, and I'm thinking, the same elected members I've been sitting here with, who have possible for them to do that. So we can say that some of these members, with some of these people, rise up to the top, and they're looking at your mantle. I'm actually a good man, you know, it's funny about him now, it's about it. I mean, that's pretty good, good job. He's sitting there, and he's like, oh, I would thank people, I would thank my new members, I would like to actually do something, oh, you do it, it's... Work, work. Now, that's generally the word. Isn't that my, the government take, the last hour, the government take, and I'm like that, because the power belongs to the north, because I have a power that is in the north. And I'm getting that all my life, and I don't have a safe location, you know, just turning the clock. My work was at my work, and I'm here, and probably every, probably shows very nicely, I've been listening to these boys, the last hour, this government take, but it's like, I'm here, man. You're almost going to take it, well, we, this is a, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. But you will be going to take it, that'll be how you get seven, eight, or nine, or ten, or eleven, or twelve, or thirteen, or fourteen, or fifteen, or sixteen, or seventeen, or eighteen, or nineteen, or twenty. Go for it, go for it, you should not afford your own purpose. And that, actually, I already pointed to it to the old man around the country, and I mean, they've announced it to me, while I'm not falling for that trick, mate, that is a reasonable base, and I don't see... They never think of it, that it actually is a political trick, but I've talked to them, to someone who I share, and I think it's probably serious. Now, we have round the transportation, and we have this. The government subjects, we love it, and I stand, certainly, I'm writing, and I stand, pet, from nine to the top. That is important, that is modest. But what I have not seen with the last six, seven, eight, nine, I've not seen, Tony, is any kind of proposed, ever, definitely, you can't shadow that. I don't know how much office time is wasted in it, because it was not ready, but that was the same, right, man, you want to know? So what's with this? And elected members could take around printing, for example, we could say it was that way. But elected members have chosen, whoever the political party, to not do that. That is a decision we have taken collectively. Now, I'll tell you what I'm for, I'm going to vote for this budget. If you don't like it, that's absolutely fine. Tell me what you're for, tell me how you do it. Because if you can do that, we can have a discussion, we can have a debate, but you're not going to do that, because you're hypocrites. And that's the sad reality, and it's a sad reality for everyone. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
As someone who has had this morning, you ought to please, um, respond and make advice for the four elected members, hypocrites, it's a common behaviour.
I'm constantly...
It's a sad thing for them.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Hypocrite.
I'll bring in a volunteering officer.
I'm not a hypocrite.
As members will be aware, unlike Parliament, we don't have Erskine May, which lists some parliamentary language in that, but I would like all members to show restraint in the chamber, or the Lord Mayor will intervene.
Thank you.
Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Uh, I would like to respond to the comments, um, that were made around closing group homes for widowed children and investing in children and young people like it was a negative thing. One of our stronger together priorities is a clear commitment to supporting vulnerable people in our communities to live their lives well. These children that end up through no fault of their own in group homes are some of those people that we've all committed to protect. Group homes have always had their place in Stoke-on-Trent, and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. That does not mean that they are right for every child. I would like to talk about Johnny. His mum is violent towards his dad, and she's also an alcoholic. His dad drinks to block out the pain and smokes cannabis. When the violent outburst starts, Johnny's mum will scream that it is all his fault, and she wishes that he would go away. As a way of coping, Johnny acts out at school. He's learned this behaviour from his mum, and he doesn't know any other way of dealing with his emotions. Johnny's seen this challenging, and again, through no fault of his own, doesn't know what it's like to experience a loving environment. Apart from this outburst, he's caring, intelligent, but he craves love, attention, and no emotional wall. What Johnny needs, Lord Mayor, is a family. He needs a family that will love and care for him. A family that will teach him that he's not to blame for his parents' choices. A family that will model positive and loving behaviour and help him to grow and develop. Johnny deserves that challenge, and that's why I will always support children being fostered rather than going into group homes, where it is achievable and where it is appropriate. I'd also, because I've got time, Lord Mayor, like to touch on something called contextual safeguarding. Contextual safeguarding is approach to understanding and responding to young people's experience of significant harm beyond their families. It seeks to identify and respond to harm and abuse posed to these young people outside of their home, even from adults or other young people. If Johnny's in a group home, he will be with other young people. And I'm not going to say that this will happen. But these young people could pressure Johnny into getting involved, or even abuse, or criminal behaviour. We need to look at the context in which we are placing our young people and decide, is it the right place for them? We always deal with the behaviour of young people, but we never look at the context in which that behaviour has happened, and how that context led to that behaviour taking place. Some children will always, always be best placed in group homes in their time of their lives. But where possible, shouldn't we be placing children with loving and caring families? Your children will go home every night to love and care, and these children in this city deserve the same. Finally, Lord Mayor, I'd just like to say that my decision today has not been taken lightly. As the Chair of Children and Young People's Scrutiny, I will not be told that I cannot and do not know how to do my job. The committee and I have fought hard to gain reassurances in the areas, in the remit of the bu, where the budget affects, that have been well thought out. Pages eighty-three to eighty-five clearly show that we have fought for the voices of parents and young people to be listened to. We've received reassurances from the relevant officers, and I feel sure that we can move forward in a positive way for the children and young people of our city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Well, actually, it's, we do need to be proud of ourselves, that's what we do. Um, and a bit of salt, I think, I brought up in my post, and I expect the public support to move on to the other counterparts, and indeed, like in the town, we can build a new office. But sadly, we haven't pulled together, and it's a lot less good news for if we study the Conservatives back, to take it normally, out of our services. Now, let's think in context. Since twenty-ten, the Conservatives have taken over two-hundred-and-twenty million pounds of funding by City. And in context, that means nine hundred pounds of every single resident who lives in City can lost. That's two thousand pounds of part of City for each and every household in that city. That will lead to all the services we are in. Only November, we came back, and we took five-point-five million out of services. Twelve, twelve months later, we're back for nine-point-seven million. Our service is clearly over for this city. Enough is enough. Why my residents, and why lots of houses, we love the city, we love Spain, and I can't stand, and I hope you can't stand, seeing Spain the way it's being built. You sit behind a stair, you take so many, because on the off, have so many stairs on the off. Tell about to my residents on South Road, they've been waiting to make that year to get hot on feld. And when we get to the counter, we get home, there is no money. Tell about to my residents on Kent Street, King Wilding Street, with lighter by flight, then, because you can count whole blank refuges to collect art from the, over Dr Hallways. Tell about to my residents who like to see their kids play on green space near their homes. And because of your funds, their spaces are going to be overgrown, meaning the kids can't play in their homes anymore. We've got a real summer of discontent in the way. Your struggling for dirty settings are already progressing well. But now you can buy the beaten mortars to make them blue. Flyer and airs are sourcing, and those people doing it need to be targeted and brought to account. But if it's impossible to fork the waste items, sixteen-hundred-forty is not the help. And remember, over forty percent of our kids in this city live in poverty. Who bank you to get an all-time high? What an absolute disgrace if that's the position we live in, face-to-face, so... Whether it's a piece of old weight that plays, costs, double the cost of resident half of benefits, causing low-income families with children with S E M to pay for home install transfers, all of this has a real impact on family life. And now in the latest plan, you're actually going after, as well as adults, our lowest-paid County South, little, hard-working, dedicated people who are on our front line. It is wrong, it's unfair, it's naturally disgrace. Nearly one million counts of our lowest-paid South, please say this again. Have you spoken to the South that will be affected? Councillor Pittorff, I've been speaking to those families. And we do have a concern, there's those five thousand pounds of couples, who both work on the lowest firing point in this county. In summary, your own consultation documents from page thirty-one tells us exactly where your... In summary, your own consultation documents from page thirty-one tells us exactly where your puts will be made. Six million pounds, nine-hundred-two million pounds on one of your own headings, and it's angry on followers. Supporting vulnerable people in our communities to live their life well. And secondly, enabling our residents to perform better tanking. That's not a good way to take six million out, when they are your priorities. Fully, I'm voting against this. And what I want to do is look over the points. You have the same concerns, let's say, speak to you.
Please.
Yeah. We need to come together, and actually, I talked also equally to my Conservative colleagues. We need to unify, like I said, a time and a place, let's go down, work with the Conservative companies, and at first, we can take so many, the money it deserves, and we need to do that now.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not going to say too much, I'm just, the lessons, everything, everything said. I'm with the NHS, and we are the man who have changed, left it here. And I have to take the course in my day, which, you know, was often made the wise. But listening to everything that's said, and I'm looking at the bigger picture as in your business, you know, and if your business is happening those wrongs, which can make a reminder that we've got, we've got a number of problems that we're telling, we've got it. So, basically, what I'm saying is, I'm going to score this, because I've seen where I work, I do, and it's, and I'm, you know, I've spoke to several people who work with Council, and who work with the NHS, and they've got the highest differences and they think that they're the best. But it's all right, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Adams. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will not be supporting this budget. I just want to pick up on a few things that have been said here by our esteemed colleagues. Councillor Irving, we have supported without question all of those budgets. Questioning, we're doing our job, we're questioning, not supporting without question. And I hope that everybody over there does not support without question, just to keep a coalition of chaos going.
Because, Councillor Adams, I've called your name, if you want to say.
I've not called anybody name.
Uh, really enough.
I, I wish that nobody-
We've said yes, that, thank you.
Thank you. Right. Why do people rely on extra payments? Well, Councillor Irving, it's because quite a few of these workers, particularly in the care sector, have to work after school times and at weekends. They do not have the support of childcare, they cannot do a nine-to-five. And if they did, you'd have nobody working in the care sector. Councillor Irving and Councillor Evans, we've put nothing else forward. I might be going a bit funny, but I'm sure Councillor Pervers has already said, let's put one million pounds less on reserves, and let's take some time to talk through all of the implications of this policy that you're putting forward, that is going to impact adversely on our social care, that is going to leave people without care. Councillor Adams, it's my understanding that we have to put a budget together by March the eleventh. If we don't, then there are other things that will happen. Oh, my. We can put the decision off, and we can go away, and we can come back with another decision with a million pounds off the reserves and people's jobs saved. Councillor Evans, put prices up, aligning inflation. I call capitalism, put prices up because it's what the market couldn't take. So let's put the price of a parking ticket up to thirty-five quid and see how we can get away with it. That is what's on. Now, I have to say, you've done me a favour, my lord, because I had the mischievous of no enforcement over parking, and people abusing the system and not even paying for the tickets, but no enforcement. So my residents have been able to get involved in this consultation and make such a noise that we've now got enforcement, that we've now got a situation where pensioners are now aware that they go, need to pay for these parking tickets. And we need to spread that a little bit more, but I doubt very much whether we'll get it in every ward, because somebody has caught the enforcement officers. So I'm really happy I'm here, because we've made some inroads. I'm also happy in the fact that the send-out has been looked at. And I'm really happy, because I sat in some of these meetings with offices with the message proof to put those ideas forward. So I want to thank people listening, but I'm also aware that there's over seven group names on that petition that you were finding them upsetting. And anyway, the ideas that came forward were very solid and very good ideas from those people. Maxine, sorry, Councillor Adams. Sorry, Councillor Clark. Councillor Clark, you're great. You know what, I think you're great. I do have concerns over the closure of these homes, because the concern that I have is the same one that I know we all have, that we may not be able to recruit enough foster carers. And that is a big concern, and I hope that if we get halfway through the year, and that's not happening, that we don't dispose of these homes, or, you know, what we think again at that. With regard to my own ward, yeah?
Thank you, Councillor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
NHS, I also work for the private sector as a junior doctor, working in the NHS. We have to work eighty hours for nine days, sometimes we're so tired, we didn't make it.
And with the private sector, we have to do, as our master's colleagues, all the good stuff. Lord Mayor, probably this is the most difficult budget that ever this council, and we, as councillors, have ever had to set. It's been difficult, because we're trying to make some very uncomfortable decisions. In order for our city council to even survive, let's alone progress. And if our city council is building a survive, no others are coming to join us, or, let me know if it's ever. How about, Lord Mayor? We are now also having crucial thresholds in our plans in this city. We are working a massive force to load the authority projects, and about that scene, so light, at the end of a very long, very long tunnel. We now have a choice, Lord Mayor, to even shoot up, and that will take us forward through the twenty-first century with confidence. And part of the building on the obvious route of cities seen in the last few years, that's a very important national average. And part of the city creation retention of jobs in this city, improving schools, housing and infrastructure. And it's interesting to hear the Labour leader actually say, he will answer the council act, building projects. Because when I was a county, the councillors are answering the Labour administration, he asked me, oh, this is not the right reason. Yes, you did, because of racial parity. And part of the city creation retention of jobs, housing and infrastructure, all of those things that our residents hold most dear in that week, as their representatives have promised to deliver. It will take very courageous determination. Oh, Lord Mayor, we can choose this part, as long as we have no elections, but we can choose it by the way it's voted. Oh, Lord Mayor, we've got alternative. We can choose an indecisive, cowardly path. We can choose not to have original elections, not us, to try and keep the status quo, we've always wanted in previous administrations, to accept more of it, let the end jobs, let the future be our young people. But this is a happy table, and if you were to answer the question today, and I say we can not have the rest of the country, and certainly our grandchildren and young people. We have the opportunity to show ourselves as a confidence and amazing, formidable, pending council that can work together to better the lives of our residents. Or we can take a week, indecisive way out, which will show us to be a fractured capital or able to make difficult decisions, and so proving us how to be more willing, a future investment virtual, it's out, here and now today. I'm proud of this project, Lord Mayor, to send a clear message to our residents that St. Patrick's Church is now ready, willing, and able to take on any challenge for the future. We can make difficult decisions, decisive decisions. We have confidence to do that, to spread, to deliver our little people. If people in this chamber are not willing to take that responsibility, then yes, a little risk as well for them. And quite simply, we can do it.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I always, I believe, I'm sorry to say, this is a problem. I'm going to see it now, with my sincere heart, that the election in December, sort of renewed, sort of renewed to the city, for all the city, will be the, that change. Because we all have about fifty years, forty years to make the representation, and we will be in the, we'll live this. The way to bring prosperity and to end poverty is through skills and is through jobs. It's my belief that the city council should be there to enable that to take place. And we have been over the past four years, making difficult decisions to let in schemes, I mean, groups, talking, you know, schemes to bring more company here in distribution and business half. And that's why I think that would be the mentality, the skills and prosperity that this city needs. So people don't need to go through that, and I would actually look at this and argue. If we're going to go down in the roots of hanging in the zip, we believe that handouts is the way to bring prosperity, we know that is a good, we know that the only way to bring the society to the residents of this city is to bring the high-quality jobs we go back and need. And we've seen that take place, whether it's with the enterprise zone around the central, which is living here for value jobs, which you need jobs, or whether it's making a successful city centre, and their decision fits our agenda, but possibly decide courage to do it, and that's our agenda each time we propose against or sat in their hands. And that, on their impressions, every twenty-four hours a day, we spend four hundred pounds and pounds on new level children over nine hundred, and on global and elderly adults, giving the care that they need four million pounds every twenty-two hours. And that pressure continues to go, while our money continues to decrease. And that is why we're in this situation, and that is why difficult decisions have to be taken. And there are proposals which, as an administration, we did not feel should have been mortified. Such as strapping some of the lollipop men and women, we get that, and we said, we're not happy with that, because the protection of our children are in our areas of poverty. Whether it's the orchestrating of recycling and collections, again, we get that, and we said, no. We definitely, orchestrating, recycling, is beneficial to the environment, to residents of the city. Or whether it's charging cars in our parks, we get that, because we value how important to help and access a right fight is to this. And what was left, well, was before today. And I know it's not the easy choice for any member, with that sort of policy, with that five-year period. And if you really want to make tough and difficult decisions nine months ago, you shouldn't put our energy forward. And the truth is clear, if you had said that today, we wrote it down, and came for that, it's right, right? If you go to down, then this is written. But the message that that sends is to the disciplinary barriers, that the forty-four members in this chamber do not make a decision, it would be, it would be totally and utterly damaging. We would not see the properties of funds from government to help with the transport, which would harm the most vulnerable in our society. We would not see the hell that we're getting with front of this imagination. And if we cared about it, to any further funding that may appear, or not, that's a major problem. And that, the end goal would be simple. The conditions to come in, that every one of us would lose our power to make a decision, which had to be long pattern and tower on us. And the last case that stood out to the government to say, no, that's all right, we can't do this, was if it's a city, what, you'll have to, the government abolished it, they abolished the rule, they abolished every single community board, and they couldn't help to advance to trade, to provide a campaign, and they abolished the council. Because that's our way of doing it, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Adams. Councillor, right, you're not.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I, I was driving, something, I was like, hey. Many hours that we spent sort of working, answering to the large, 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 to say to the resident, the council, that we need to go to the bar, and wait, and take, or just kind of, so we're meditating the, the, the hours in position. The longer the decisions made, the, the, I was allowed to, to make those decisions.
We have to support the services that we need. It's like the law in this council. And it's a hard, hard thing for parties, definitely. Now, there's some hard decisions that have to be made. I live for retail, I live for charity. I live Saturday, I live overtime. I don't pay any difference with Saturday, I pay any difference with overtime. For charity, you don't pay less with a Saturday or a Sunday. And I still do it, because I'm proud to do it. It's a proud decision, and a proud sport, as all of us know. And that's why I'm part of this revolution, and I'm staying here now, I'm managing. Because I've heard all this saying, I really have a better part of the world. I don't reach this seat because I'm a politician. But today, I just can't stand it, it's a mess it's in more. I want to wait for this party to notice something. That is very, you know, hard ideas, but they're not half the same ideas. There was no other example, the unions are on the ocean. It's a big feat to that, that they can negotiate all the way up to our line. We're voted today to make savings of nine, of one million in terms of emissions. It was a necessary thing that we go a quarter of time, we do their social spending, I think, a thousand. I'll go there. And so that's about it. You don't want to buy unions, you don't want to buy the party, and that's how it is. If you want to save some money, I just want to pay my shouldn't use, it's a waste of time. And I've been waiting, I've been waiting for this motion today. And I've seen the bad news out of it, but I've been waiting, I've got time for them. And it's not that, I actually think it's lost twenty-nine of them. And it's never like I've had a part of the job. I'm doing it.
Well, I please, thank you, my sister, and I could tell that I'm here for you. I'm so sorry. How do you all know? Let's be clear, this will be the city where it's going to look before the past, our city. And just be also clear, the council of theirs mentioned that there'd be six different ways that you want to see it differently. If you're in actual December, maybe you'll have time, maybe you'll have time to this. It was only, it was only one hundred and twenty since the pandemic happened to this city. So we're going to learn one chance to improve the power we have, we know. And suddenly you say you want to do four, it's important to the council. The council can't be smart, gorgeous citizens, the council can't, how about that, that's hard. And what's second, I mean, I've finished a social housing program, which is excellent, you know, the city. What's that, what? What type of commission before you could transfer service by your own people? Because very often they get far behind the needs of sixteen. So if you're doing services, you need support, and to be in front of that, it's fantastic. And it's sweet, oh, I can't back this here. The reasons I can't back this are numerous, or trying to keep it free. So if I'm going to the city, it's a very short distance life. It's very difficult, we've all over the rest of the world, having our free lives. For the earth to be exactly what we can't change this, and also for our hours being, that's not free time. Thank you. Two parties who are two parties to be seen, powerful, who are in the same job, who are five hundred, sometimes sort of six hundred and five hundred. One party told me to do the food, but they're the ones that are six hundred and five hundred. And it's being impacted, or what, how? We, although we're blind, we're going to want our own good stuff. This is a food to be waiting, extra cash onto our book and sack of services. Who are supposed to care about our benefits, not being used as an actual action? More clearly, as you perhaps have talked about, it's more like this. And then they come to our social assistance, our white heart series, when the piece of price, should deliver access as the equivalent of having their own transport, have what they catch on for the peace. But the process of fifty-five hundred health contract changes will not be welcomed by a such cheap medical package. But our work is more impactful, and we're led to advance the challenge of the efficacy. The administration's any good things, they're sad to say. As it amounts to a protest to impact, the impact commission services families is contrary to direct, but travel, you both. Assistant partners are connected to within this, within the right. So it's all about the global health services, and we're also talking about the section section, and the health contracts. It's the goal for that, it's actual, so simply, residents are called to global health services to help with the station support. Part of the voters are inconsistent with national protection, travel, the most positive part of the health services. The trust has considered, should thirty-three voters continue the history of the bottom, as we're taking, a crisis voters are a certain person, who are dramatically misaligned. But I wanted to know the sustainability of our local health and care economy, and place mandates on financial immediacy at the expense of strategic progress. The voters are the buyer, particularly in Washington, too, have a poor quality in terms of their hope, sorry, in terms of their potential to reduce the cost of residents. We need to be the least risk, so safety to handle the death, the assassination, and assassination of people streaming through the healthcare system. In particular, the trust is considering that the view of children's health plan provision, and charities for services with limited resources, they are opportunities, has a potential to place trust on existence, for our benefits. Which I think is a lack of, that's in great time. So in all areas of the trust will be able to track up city council, considering the potential of previous consequences of such proposals. And satisfy its citizens, thank you. And satisfy itself, improving to status, and the impact of quality negative services, and the quality of quality. So, instantly, how about it, please say, changing executive, sorry, back, back, no, let's believe it, say, changing executive, and more such a matter of energy, just. Do it to me. Instantly, despite that, it was very important, it was very important, it was on that to say yes to. And that's in fact, I think, of, I would hear, it was that I view the assumption of funeral ceremony to be very special, to be very tough, so that. Therefore, it's honestly prepared, and will not be going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the managing officer for the party council, who were critical, who were like, and trying to say. So the rule now, I think, is if you're critical, to say that the fellow, the Tory, sorry, the spare. Glory again in the name of the government, there's spare. Well, everything is, is yes, because of course, I know if I'm Tory government, think, actually, we may use it for two. Two hundred and twenty million hundred, of course, in this council, since two thousand and ten. That really forced the position, the lady woman in the administration, it actually, of course. And I've got to say, that's how the administration didn't support that, because it's in the country against it. So actually, of course, the drivers, this, the buyers, we want, it's a critical one, there. Most of the damage is taken, we have, they have fees, how many years? We've got a Tory government since two thousand and ten, which ran two hundred and twenty million hundred, of course, down the city streets. The critical one, there, the councillor, right, in my, last year, said that he said this, he would not take the council, or the city council. Not even you, it's a critical, we must be full on course. We need to be, the moving crime, I guess, about city, that's a critical law. It's a critical law, the Tory government, playing a labor, five hours a position, hopefully, the government today. And they have a second time, triple, triple the national debt. Will they have to do this when we go on now? All these trillions and trillions of pounds, so it comes to that, it's part of the security, and recent, you said. So I'll do this one to you, to you, to the Tory government, I'll take towards the conscience. It's a critical, the sample created is cheap activity, because it's based on the debt. Paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of pounds to there, plus the mortgage toll, mm, okay. But the other way, I've been cancelled since two thousand and three. I've got to say, I don't think I've ever been as embarrassed, to be represented by this. It's a fact, you can't really do this, you know. One of the issues of our days, we've set it out, and we forward to you that in discussion, baby. The biggest reason of resources within this city council, because certainly not be targeting the most important parties. And I speak to my group, and also the foundation council, they're all for. And it's, we see the London Centre for Health, by what, what have you all had to do in there? Very hard presentation, saying that you're going to be up late, then, just basically this week. We see the children's centre, or, 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 method, the public presentation. To the, the community centre, probably, and transferred it. Fountain is just been designated, and it's, I can't guess, aside from that, maintain, that council, um, generally, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds, for a fourth path, and then a golden door, and a golden blockers. But it's certainly not probably, as a council centre, I forget, for us, um, a maximum. Good man, I have a question, should place in fact, and you have thirty thousand pounds, you've allocated to the water, the even transfer. A top head, I have the fourty state, I have to buy them the fourty, the fourty, they're for, they're for. I don't get streets, man, they're running, the streets actually talk down. I don't get that much, I don't get that much space. And yet, the same with something, you have the front desk setting, you have new wine, screen TVs, you have terminal dedicated, man. I don't think this council needs to get its borders right, and we're also. Are you sure? The simple man, we, we try to make home, see whether it should fix in the most critical areas, it's very important, for that, it must be usual, I'm serious.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and he's always happy. Um, first of all, that's our call, it's in the hotel. We, our elected members are accountable to the public, and the electricity in this city, and see so many of you taking part in the policy today, is very useful. Um, I think, in the past, we did, it's very much, we did, for this city. We've got huddles, so, quite frankly, are so big. As I see, frontline service workers risking their lives to fill the whole town, who, uh, uh, who, who works it, on a Friday night, just. It's, uh, we partly repaired, and we probably only put its waters, and, 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 for its water, we're coming back to it, because I know we've been reporting by, a number of people across the city, on, 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 we wake. Um, as the councillor said, we need to live a longer city, not like in that. We are in danger of this city, because it is so dirty, and frightened, and, and, like, the grass is thin, but. The aspirations of our citizens are low. People don't want to live, to even survive in the county, the councillor's, it's, it's, it's part of it. And I would want to live in cities, the easiest, it's anywhere, it's not better. We will not raise the aspirations of our citizens, to contribute the values we were treating our own employees. We should value what they do, we should be paying them fair rate for what they do, and it's, and that's what you want to say, well, do it. But, do anyway that values their employment, pay them what they should, to be paid, even the services that they get, and to others. It's not about paying overtime. You pay four million pounds in overtime this year, four million pounds in overtime this year. Your overtime's not to be paid to staff, because you've got all the staff, and you're going on stress, you're throwing away time, pay. Should it, it's more business proof, to pay your staff what they are worth. If your staff feel valued, it will look harder for you, than if you pay them the minimum wage, or the minimum rate you could get a wage with. Staff work half the time, and they feel valued. It doesn't matter what your job is, if you feel valued for what you do, you will put in the hours, extra, over and above what you're paid for, because you know that it's counted, that you're valued for what you do. Please, look again at what you're doing, you've got to fall out to have a look at some of the positions that people's changed on this. Value your workers, put your overtime wages, save all the new pants, and pay our care workers, watch YouTube for what they do. And to the curate, each of them is a ground. You propose to vote for Tamble. The Tamble, it's a topic, that's why I stick my teeth. They get, they, they want to, okay? And if it is time, fifty to the city, they go, what's the town? With the fifty, the big city, they're contrary, and we're going to have a town hall, a town hall. Hamlet Town Hall, Mark's Civic Centre. Hamlet Town Hall, Jack, wait, he got chance to say, I'd like to say, good intention. That was, how many times is all of this, that, okay? We, we, we caught, obviously, break-ins on some of our heritage buildings, and then this council have not supported those businesses, to, to keep those heritage buildings, like, to pass the pandemic to, as well, it's more than over. From the sound, you know? In this respect, I, in this respect, I can't, can't, in my conscience, of this budget, there's too much to be done differently. And it's been a lot of street safety, because it's been a lot of opportunity, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wait to watch a fire, using my special powers, and sue attacks, and sue the unions. And this guy, where it is, that, that you are staying, doing these shifts, and we are innovating, and, 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 and. So, of course, the, I mean, Ron, they're on side in this speech, just want to take a turn for the car accident. He should have took a turn for food banks as well. This is what I consider, that, um, this country, taking on the car accidents and food banks, we should have food banks and car accidents. We are a very legitimate country in here, and we should have, we should, the people can leave for the car accidents and food banks. And of course, members said, that they raised these residence apartments, and, like, in the past. They're going to do the fiction, fiction, one hundred and eight, this month, or, or, I think, four. France is transitive, but it's not, I know. And, that is what I'm going from eighteen pounds to eighty-five pounds, that's not a percent, or that's not a percent. Five, ten, eleven, eleven, from sixteen, from forty, and my board will be affected more than in the house, and I've been struggling with the last ideas. Keep fighting, I can't do it, I've tried, that means it. Uh, that, you know, that I've got to, that, but then, then, of course, the council, in my board, in time, it's only next month again, and they've got. So we try to sort stuff, but it's still there, because we have two districts, so we're supporting people to pay another, even though it's hard to do. So, that's also, I do believe in it, higher base not being affected. I don't want people getting higher paid, but the local, you do, and put a job, throw in the balance, they should be rewarded. So, there's no way, I, I can support this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the two I, the two, the issue, the, 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 just, just, we, we, so, the, 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 this is more, and I can't get. My new, and, and, I can make one thousand pounds, for, there is, we can get thirty-sixty, which is, uh, four thousand, and, 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 only, aside from food, which the estimates are thirty, thirty, about, uh. So we take, say, fifty percent, I guess, and we're like, we're going to do, this one. But seriously, that is just about food, raising, for the food. But then, my, I, I, to myself, I'm giving seventy thousand pounds, for, going out of, going, going, partly, and, my impression, is also, in, uh, could, it may establish an application, that I'm having my. And I put that, to, 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 and also, I've got, as being in finance, the, the council, since we've had, you. Seriously, yes, it can, so, I put a pound, to execute such, and it's not, it's not, it's not, on bike and services, it has been, generally. All of the problems, it's, 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 our state, because we just, our city. But it's also, it's one of the, 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 this mind. Speaking of services, have been taught that our city is wealthy, we have a vibrant, many streets and apartments, and it is a big business. I do when we have some babies, who they are sure of resource. But I do believe in administration for the best. We have, that's what we do for this administration, we come now and we give it to the last in the area. Of course, there is enough of the gold, you're charging people for the D I money, nation of the tops. This is not good. This small size of services is not giving our loans a loaning, and now we want to even start about the city's attitude. You are always spending more than you have, you are buying more, you are charging our residents more, and yet you are giving people a lot of services. Who do you think of that we lost? And if that was enough, you are putting a pay of a huge amount of this. These people, sadly expect you making your heartache, but the pleasure that you got is this price. This was those working right. I guess you come so down to think, long and hard by these thoughts, if they're speaking, if you have to, you will only share it. You will, you will fight over it, that shows that you are listening to it. I am healing that, that is a game, in various, I work after parties, because I had, because that is not worth it. Therefore, what we do, it's not that easy to do. Let us make a united start against this story, of course. Let us send a message to our residents, that we are person, and that we are very dear. Let's try to say, oh, this is a big topic of you and me. Thank you very much.
Also, I think George and Sam, who all saved the morning here this council. I think one of the strongest emotions is quite high, quite stressful discussion. So we want to, yeah, I think there is a lot of high expectations, so should we hope to have in that transcript of discussion about the past seven years. I think I'm the answer, as number of colleagues here. I think I'm trying to, uh, sign with the council that this is for the services, in support of my brother and son, the community. The reason for that is that the community gives so much to me, and I want to something that actually will be. Everybody here, oh, we agree to the public services and for public communities. Nobody comes to the, to the council, let's say, the public services, and everything that's in the pocket, that's fine. And I want to make sure that the people of Ibrox and my city can actually have a concert which can support the services, and support the people who like, support the local community, support the elderly, and support children. So, uh, but to do that, what we need to do, a concert to a financial strategy. And important, different decisions have to be made. And often, we're looking at a market, and he knows how different decisions he has made when he was leader of the council. I still remember, maybe you see documentaries, walking in the streets of Ibrox and more, on his sideline, when he made a different decision, closed a K O in Ibrox, his own house. And I still remember that I served for a real government K home, when, as a K home was closed. I still remember the same street, a golden youth centre was closed, during this time. So we make different decisions, and, uh, and we're not this time, too many years, because financial strategy is crucial for the council to run, to provide better services for our communities as well. As councils, we are, we strongly have a foundation duty to answer taxpayers, and that a true duty facility adds up to several of the law and budget. Free to separate, to live to the association of services, and the council being able to ensure commitments, the service provisions to communities. Uh, let's go to the past, self-proposed, so-called past, and I look at it very carefully, all the briefings of the council officers, and challenge them, so nothing changed. The first one, Lady Bunn, who, uh, uh, who's, uh, uh, considered, uh, how I said before, she's doing amazing job as a magistrate in here. It is about the small K homes, K for children. So these are the five K homes that we close, and the reality of these is that there are only eight institutions there. And a few, I see, children every day, who are in care, it's not any job. The children in care, or supported by social care, are the best to get back into constructive initiatives. A record, I went from, uh, going over there, it says that we do not have enough of care, and that's a sound initiative, why don't we have enough of care? In my decisions every day, I say that, Mark, you are like some social care, why do you take this information? As the bulk of every social care in this council chamber, next day, we'll have all of social care to care for children here, not in a K home setting, when they do not get actual housing. And it's not a bit of a hand that is better to take, any setting, a residential, in a family setting, so they can be responsible for the individuals and the community. And then the number of citizens that have been promoted, they're all thinking about the great people who just have had a long so long experience. And really, the shape of our, still the public sector, which is almost two million of that, and it's both the public and the city, sadly, they're both through those proposals. It's very clear that this is about renegotiating contracts with the community trust and rental trust, and it's something new that's happening in primary level, with the T P services, having all the services together. This is not actually to make services better, but I'm working on those taxes, I know many of our residents, not like that, and I'm not supporting that kind of proposal at all. But, oh, we have to have a balanced project, we do have, but let's talk to the cross finish, maybe this, where everybody's talking for. So finally, I have, I do support the project, but let's talk to the, the next year, so that we're not having council tax, but other person for the next one.
I think I'm saying, I'm saying. Thank you, my man. As we use, as we put each aspect of the world, that fourteen year, I do accept the purpose of more better, and more services, for children, and absolutely every top of the list, and let's not forget, we are the people, so everyone, and then to build to the movies, to act, to invest, to plan our, to plan to show the services, to keep our children safe. However, during this pretty accepting process, there is consistently, you know, a hundred men, and two women, who follow, that item, the, 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 the services. On initial government, I think, I love the, 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 the , the, 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 the,[959.12]
The Cabinet Member for Finance, five years. So that's really five, I would suggest, as it's been presented by a Tory, I would suggest. But anyway, anyway. And five, during those five years, we've also had a Tory government. We've had it longer than that, but, you know. So let's just say five years, five years. And, um, we've lost, what, £200 million from the city, we've heard. Now, I don't know if you've heard of Oxbridge here, but that's interesting. Because, uh, Commissioner Brown, in her opening statement, said, "Like all other councils in the country." Now, sorry, not in Oxford, so they're extra nine million this year. Extra nine million, because it's a better place, it deserves more. Sorry. A bit bitter, sorry. That's, they're really down on the rocks down there, I tell you. It took me to give them 24 million more. 24 million more! Not cutting, what they do here. Hampshire. Oh dear. Falling house prices. They're almost dead, what is Hampshire? We'll give them 35 million more. Right? Now, go to the people who need to be with us after. What I was saying was, yes, listen. Even in this city, there are leafy suburbs. There are leafy suburbs in this city. And they're suffering from flytipping like the inner city does. The dog filing and the potholes. Not in the leafy suburbs. Perhaps we should give them more and let's cut back on attacking flytipping and dog filing and potholes. Because those are the things that come from my neighbours and residents. And then, we must and just finally we'll look at the situation with soloplicity. Now, when I was a cabinet member for green finance, we looked at many different schemes. In fact, I think the one with Eon went down really well with residents. Because what we did is we put the residents first. How is this going to benefit our residents? Somebody will have to tell me what the, uh, the rationale was for, uh, getting into bed with soloplicity. Because it seems like one thing, I mean, is the residents are coming last. And that can't be right. Okay? All right, okay. Anyway. I technically want to say anyway, but, uh, I just didn't like the interruption. So, anyway, thank you very much.
I have to make it clear that I am now speaking as a councillor in the House of Commons. Hello, this is someone who has something to say. There's the audience. It's absolutely horrendous. I'm not sure if I can really, and in possession of the power, I mean, I'm pretty sure, because what the main office is a lot more decent than you might think. Because as we were saying, we are not important. Plus, most of them, it's actually not great. I'm not even quite sure what's going on. I came in to be a councillor, as I can, and residents. I did not know, because I was going to be part of such difficult decisions. Didn't know, and then we know you're a politician, and you're a councillor. But I've listened to things about group homes, I crash in that and a couple of sessions later, and I had to explain to me that when we're there to produce group homes, it wasn't actually going to stay the same. It was because it's a smart, you know, management of different needs and the group homes are a difficult place to show. So I thought it actually from that school was the object of this meeting, of the energy that it's about. Our citizens, and they were more than before. I think it deserves, so it comes, it's a priest. And everything's fine. Uh, however, I can't remember any chickens that has the mansion in the morning. I thought she was a councillor. I was so upset with your decisions. Devoted, powerful, non-stressy, and all of them. And you did not listen, and you did not ask questions. Like, as you need to be, or to be, or anything. So that's that. And it did take, certainly independent steering and route, to actually fill it and correct problems that were enforced and passed through. The town's minimum average, very high. I also think, of course, it's not putting the oil time out. It's putting I think you're talking about putting out time. However, it doesn't quite put it out time, which I heard this side, it's putting the other councils. When we first came to John, do you imagine, and the answer was same? What else is there to be added to it? I'm a councillor, so I I listen to everybody in here, and I expect the same respect, take that to me. If you don't mind. Um, and I would always, if the councillor put forward, keep paying the other councils. And I, um, probably for this, or I remember that. So I do know what it's like, it's happening on me. I believe it too. I question it every day. You know, food, we have a position for it. We have a chicken, a firehouse, and we make broth of the month. But we never had the food, but I can't remember how to eat more than that. Um, I love the world from that point, but I can't remember eating more than that. Oh, well, we got one minute, yeah. So, I bring it back to saying, I still care about the people of Stoke-on-Trent. I really do. I wish I could put my arms around everyone in Stoke-on-Trent and protect you all. But anyway, I don't perform the project with the conditions that I have been told by the new set of directors, that negotiations will still continue. And I hope that the unions continue negotiations. So I don't be voting for it to then, with the conditions of trust. I do hope that trust won't be betrayed. Because I truly am speaking from my heart. I do care about the people of Stoke-on-Trent. And, uh, I'm attached to you, right? I appreciate all of your assistance. Thank you. How's the phone?
Lady, I'm saying, in this, uh, version, I will be supporting the goodies, uh, in the power of these substitutions. Obviously, they are the talents, um, taught you about the goodies. And so, hopefully today, that means the points, uh, we actually have the drive to make the goodies over the line. I'm all here, but that's how you know I'm all here, positive person. It is genuinely preparing our, our resources, because guess what? The alternative, the alternative of not setting this budget is ten times worse than actually getting this budget through.
You said it's in your hand, of course.
We've been through, there's a, there's a couple of elections, every single budget, over and over again. And some rejected, some agreed, some changed. But the reality is, as I said last week, we have to find the one or two. The answer is, in terms of the £900,000, in terms of the terms of conditions changes, it's approximately 30 more jobs. 30 more additional redundancies was the iron cost, the cost to actually pay the redundancies, which obviously paid for by actual business. And as I said last week, it's like one evil against another. I get no pleasure at all in supporting the budgets. I hope every single one of you in the audience say, "I'm absolutely cutting, I'm cutting it off." I really am, because we have to set the budgets. What we have to do is we have to try to maintain services, minimize the risk of those services, and mitigate those services and those costs in terms today, exactly, of budgets. I'm aware that some of the councils over there, because I think some of them are around here, to tell you that as well, you have had to make those difficult decisions in terms of 2011, 12, or 2015, 16. That sums up, or only 24 million pounds cost in building funding. So I feel the decision, and you know what, I feel like apologising to you, because I sat over here and just rejected the budgets. I'm not wrong there, in terms of proposals. And yes, it was easy, it was easy to be that, or why you're on this side, or why you're on the other side. It's difficult. So I do sympathise if you want that to do, and the last, and not get you apologised, and just be completely honest with it, and where exactly where you're coming from. In terms of this budget, it's not all about humanity. I think the opposition absolutely said that. There is massive investment program for this budget. And of course, if you know, set that budget, we actually risk, and I can't tell you about the risk, I can't get through it. Especially to my colleagues, I have tried to get the risk over of not setting this budget today. Especially with what's known as gratuitation of damage. Not gratuitation of damage to ourselves, as individual councillors, or gratuitation of damage. As a councillor, down in the same governments, where he wants us to go down, and ask for this funding. Now, we've been successful in so others, and there is no funding from the governments. Yes, a lot of the options for me, which are towards us, and so to, we're a greater administration, it's nothing more wrong with them. I'm not a white man, I'm racist, but it's no coincidence, I could have this, and have the three deafness, cabinet ministers, the locals, we have additional money. Into services of the property, here in 70, for the rent, and that was actually, for homelessness, for housing. We have additional money, but if we lose our gratuitation today, we miss everything. We really do, we miss everything. We miss the promise from the, the pastors, the fundraising of programs, especially our celebration. We risk the capital program investments that we talked about. We risk the, 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 the gas and gas market funds, £2.5 million for our communities to actually deliver additional services. And fill the gaps that we don't have to divide because of the previous, or the funding that we have now. So the risk, I have to stress, the risk of master agreement to this budget. I don't take that risk, I really can't. And I do understand that the simple virtual equal effects more than others. But the reality is, the other side of the coin will be worse. It will be in the test of course, maybe in the test of car, cars, soon, the actual residents, it will be, it will be twice sooner for the leisure for the outside. And we keep talking about two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, it's to be that, and the reality is, we've got to. We've got, we've got to this point. We've got to this point where now we're screwed, and I haven't seen the budget out. And that's it, made difficult decisions, seriously difficult decisions. Well, I can't trust the consequences that I'm setting today, or agreeing with the budgets, well, it will be all downhill. And I do come on to be in the position, all this time, and saying, I'm always so, it's not about me, it's not even about, you know, everybody in this room, it's about the residents of the city, it's about the staff, the whole of the staff. We blow up our own lives and fortunes today, while the schools and the schools are outside you. Thank you.
Can I have a speak, yes? How's the line to someone?
Thank you, uh, I've got to say, to be honest, it's a good time, I hope that you keep our hands away from our own own religion. And maybe it's possible, I'm sorry, I may be suggesting that we don't do lobbying, I don't know, just remember, number of head of armies that I'm looking at, so last far months. I'm made, I'm in a position, no matter what, but without my own responsibility. I want to thank those who made positive contributions in the past, and will sign such a book. Particularly those starting on these challenges, with the face, with the source, with the issues. I'm disappointed with our education, but I'm watching the rest of the expectations. Disappointed that the rest of the board won't be able to do it. And so, all the men, uh, candidates, I know, it's and so I can't leave, for the clarity of what's happened, the label to avoid pushing, leaving these characters. We already, we would normally encourage our friends, who we need to occupy, to make this, 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 this. So we're referring to the additional cost and the situation. We've also involved several assets, that's another way out. My vision is, obviously, I certainly made, I also present the legal, the legal children's statistics. I also know, in 2015, I inherited a plan to close everyone in the centre of this, that takes our area apart. We could talk about it to children, um, cash and bank, um, seeing, there's a, you play, and it's, it's which is all, because there is a plan, I've got a plan, it comes there, it's a job, so that plan, there was being opted. We could, that would be insane, for even a character class, or a service force, for them to carry out those areas. We have to remain simple, that would be important to do. And we need to call, not to talk to the council, but to say, as I'm outside, I don't believe this part of the state. We need to make decisions on, to provide, to, 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 to make. But I do want to say, 5.5 million pounds per cent is mainly for children's services. They invest in children's services. We have often, until today, we've had, to use, horrendous things, immigration, about that cases. But I'm not too really clear, anyone who believes in talking about children's services, they're obeying the song of the house of God. Who is there for services, you are better than us, we are all better than us. Um, more respect, chances, because they're in detail, so those houses, you talk to our partners, or sort of, as you're doing your services, you should be disposed of. And I also want to read to it, the message that's already included in the national presentations. For one, ladies and gentlemen, we have to decide, as to what, what, how, decision. This is directed to the email, really, this week, the comments all there, with this opportunity to propose to go forward, our own colleagues, our whole staff, people who make the calls. These happy share of the trade unions, and we make the need to talk about them, to talk about them. So our employees, who work for today, do a fantastic job, and we take to you, as we use your life and choices. All we do, by not making a decision today, is making a decision, I can't really, four, nine, two years, ten years, we flash out, because we're only out, we lose, and the terms of conditions, I believe, I'm, I need to talk about it again, next year. But it's not sorry, I said, let's just put it off, it's pretty hard, it's not bad, it's not sorry, and it's here, it's not, it's not, it's not a position. In this room, you think it's really scary, because then you're, this is, this is a new person. And usually these decisions, or they're written, they're taken, and, but I'll remind you, remember this year, outside of this week, there are more than a million people who voted in, and they're looking at what they're going to do, they don't look at it. And they are looking at, as we mentioned, to go over the process, and this is, this is, it's a big decision, it's not very fascinating, it's not very difficult tomorrow, it's not actually, about having the time, and to do this. It's a big decision to ask a manager, in case there's a mission, and I'm glad to be able to, uh, if you want to leave the also, change your mind, on me. But I'm also, actually, on stage, I have been following my own dream, I can tell you now, the section of our office, I will say. I'm with you, they're very sensitive, so it's an important, it's a very precious, not one that we can keep to.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, all we would want to die, all three, name of the vote. The legal case, which only sits supporting of, uh, while the people then hear all votes on the logic, are considered by statutes. Thank you, Lord Mayor, the commission, I will proceed on a controlled vote. I will leave out each councillor's name, in turn, how effectively I can give you the, the Lord Mayor. You will require it four against or abstain, is that clear to all members? At the end of this, I will refer to my colleagues, and then the result will be announced. Lord Mayor. Councillor Adams. I didn't hear that, they said, do. Councillor Ali. Councillor Ashworth. Councillor Battenley. Councillor Seaman. Councillor Ellenbilly. Councillor Esten. Councillor Blerton. Councillor Jay Bowles. Councillor S Bowles. Councillor Bridges. Councillor Brown. Councillor Chefflin. Councillor Park. Councillor Conti. Councillor Dog. Councillor Elliot. Councillor Evans. Councillor Pummel. Councillor Gerard. Councillor Hissain. Councillor Irving. Councillor German. Sorry, Councillor James, sorry, Councillor James. Apologies, Councillor James. Councillor Joe. Councillor Sinkele. Councillor Haggerty. Councillor Kelso. Councillor Maxum. Councillor Pender. Councillor Perez. Councillor Pitt. Councillor Platt. Councillor Palaket. Councillor Shotten. Councillor Simpock. Councillor Smith. Councillor Wanger. Councillor Watson. Councillor Wazir. Councillor Williams. Councillor Doolan. Thank you, the results of the called votes are as follows. Four, nineteen, against twenty-two. Sitting in the chamber, thank you. I will continue with the results, abstentions, one. Given that the budget has fallen, the City Director has given a pen service as a statement, will be to be made. Councillors, the budget proposal is not agreed to this council meeting. This means that the budget will have a system to be convened into the sixth of March, 2020. Budget process and move setting the housing tax for the city in 2020, 21. Until the November 1922, the council has a duty to settle housing tax for the next year ahead, before the 11th of March, 2020. And we provide you with information for all councillors, and with information on set the budget and housing tax. It is the duty of all councillors to come together to set a budget and housing tax. As such, to obviously, the section of parliament, officer, the lunch officer, and the service administrator service, with their councillors, come together for discussions, to reach proposals, and in the city, at a weekly meeting, and let all the councillors use this weekly action, set a budget and housing tax, early or later in March. Uh, thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillors, the, uh, the Lord Mayor is going to, this is going to have to meet, which you go to propose a journey of council meeting till the sixth of March, at two thirty p.m. Uh, the session to take place. Um, I'll hand over to the Lord Mayor to continue to propose a moment, if a second one is agreed, uh, do not take place. Um, in terms of cabinet members, you will notice today, cabinet meetings are all, if required. And, um, with the English Commission, I recommend that cabinet members, uh, if you are content to convene your meeting immediately after this meeting, and to adjourn till twelve noon on the sixth of March. And have a new time for the cabinet to consider formally any proposal, which is legally required, prior to council, see.
Unless you, I will stay in Germany till sixth of March, to propose a meeting, do I have a second? Thank you, Miss Al. Hello, is it Vagan? Hello, is it Gennis?